I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, and to this hope for liberty and justice for all.
Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yeah.
And I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, approve the claims filed with the county auditor in the amount of one hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved employee claims filed with county auditor for one thousand eight hundred sixty dollars and forty-nine cents.
Motion approved.
So, second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved monthly employee health report. Everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Gladly approve that.
Hmm, I have a first, do I have a second?
Oh, a second there.
A first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
So maybe I, just Karen, we always go ahead and prove that, it might be nice for the public here to know that what we got carrying in there.
Oh.
That amount.
So the ending plan balance is one million eight hundred forty-seven thousand eighty-three dollars and three cents.
We personally self-funded our health plan, so that's good help to us in keeping our health plan rates down.
Yes. Right, approve monthly report from the reporter's office in the amount of nine thousand six hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, approve, uh, change order number eleven for the emergency operations center. This is for a light to go over by the door, um, there was some back and forth as to whether it would be signed off, whether electric, the electrical inspector would approve the electrical without having a light by that one overhead door, a light switch. Um, so the amount is one thousand two hundred three dollars and ninety-nine cents, it's us. They're ninety percent sure that it will be approved without this, I mean, like.
So this is something contingent upon not passing the electrical inspection?
Uh, potentially, yes.
So we may not have to do it?
We may not have to do it, we may have to do it. Do you want to get to the electrical inspection and then after everybody's gone, have somebody come back and try to do it?
Well, is there one switch already, see, I, I see it's, it's.
There.
There's a switch there and it says the three ways, that means you're telling me that you want to put two switches in at different locations.
Chris, you want to add on to this?
Yes. Okay, originally when you go in that back warehouse door, the door we're using to get in there now. The light switch for that whole warehouse area is up next to Ty's camp. Okay, but when they built it, they didn't, they, they did not move that light switch. And, uh, so what they did is they added a light switch out of the walkout door, the hallway door there that goes into the warehouse. Okay, so that's where the light switch will be, for the back warehouse. What they're talking about is the walk-in door on the other side.
On the west?
On the west side where you come in, because when you come in that door, it's pitch black to get to the light switch.
So that would be where?
So that's what he thought the electrical. He thought the inspector won't pass it because it's an exit, there has to be a light switch by the exit. So that would be running wires from the existing box that they have there by our thing, the conduit and wire over to a new switch by the door. Uh, I, I questioned it, so I called Josh Dimmer on it, and, uh, I heard back from them Friday, Friday when I called you, Bob?
Yeah.
Um, they talked to the electrical engineer guy from drawing, do the drawings for it, and he thinks we'll be fine not doing.
However, it is a safety issue because that would be one of the doors that the sheriff's office would be coming in.
One of those things we can save it for later if it passes, where, I meant the, the electrical inspector is supposed to be there.
Well, it seems like a big charge for.
And that's, that's what I, that's why I called Denver, it seemed like a lot of, lot of money for one light switch. Twelve hundred dollars?
Yeah.
But the.
The labor on it's the killer, because you gotta get up into the ceiling.
And then run piping also, because it has to be piping.
It has to be, yeah.
And, uh, the gals that, my, are not mine, but Dimmer talked to. Yeah, remember the name of the architect, the electrical architect that did it? Um, he said that's, that's about right, about normal. He said the cost doesn't worry him at all on, for that, doing that. That's what it is.
So where's the plans getting to twelve hundred dollars?
Are both?
I'd make the motion that we do not install it until we find out whether we pass the inspection. Because I, I, I can't see spending another.
So, but you do realize that in the middle of the night, going back to the evidence area, then the police department have to go in, our sheriff's department goes in there in complete darkness.
They have flashlights, they have headlights.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, that, that you were okay with this because it could be a safety issue.
I don't, I don't see a situation. Not you claiming. For over a thousand dollars, as much money as we've poured into this ELC, and we don't have that length funding.
I. It's a safety issue that bothers me on this, uh, but I think, uh, I'm gonna go along with John on this and second it because we just wait and see if it passes or not, and maybe we can get somebody else to go do that, just seem like twelve hundred dollars is a lot for that.
Okay.
So I'll second that.
All right, so I have a first and a second to hold off on this and to see if it passes without us inspection without completing the switch.
And if it, uh, I guess what we need to figure out here, we probably should add that in there, if, if it doesn't pass.
Right. And that was my intent, yeah.
And you want to make that in the motion, if it makes it so it doesn't pass, then we, then we proceed if it's, if it does not pass.
So we can edit that motion, Chris, thank you.
Got it.
And I'll second that.
Okay. All right, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
All right. Maybe Josh is there, so emissions will cover that.
All right. Uh, proof invoice for M and K flooring.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And where's funding coming from?
That's, that'll be added into that, a part of dollars that we set aside for the restrooms, two hundred thousand.
I got a first and a second, all in favor?
All right. So floors are done, so Larson can proceed.
Yes, he can. And then we just have to get the painting done at a later date. Resignation of Gary Corkery, Byron Township trustee.
Make a motion to approve their resignation. Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, items for discussion, place on file, the following maneuver management plans, Schuman Site, Newman Township, I'm sorry, Newton Township. Section seven, Five Sisters LLC, Sumner Township, section nineteen, Five Sisters, Blinn, Sumner Township, section thirty, Fremont Land Farms LLC, Fremont Township, section two, H I, I'm sorry, H S T LLC, Hazelton Township, section thirty-five, Kevin Cluckspot, Washington Township, section twenty-four, Michael Robinson, Madison Township, section twenty-one, Flattery Brothers Farm Two, Middlefield Township, section twenty-eight.
Make a motion, that goes on file?
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is it nine fifteen? No, it's not.
Um, let's.
Building maintenance one, I asked to have that put on.
Okay, let's do building maintenance, ELC.
There was some work done by Precision Plumbing out at the Public Health ELC building.
Well, that would extend those events.
And it's not a lot of money. But the problem is during budget time we were asked to remove because that line item was janitorial building maintenance, Rydell Building, that was just the name of it. So I was asked to inactivate those accounts because they were no longer needed. So now what it's come down to is we do not have a maintenance GL number for this current year or the upcoming fiscal to pay any building maintenance out of. So that's why I'm trying to figure out, I know it's only a hundred and five dollars, but I need to know how you guys want to handle this.
You didn't put anything in for ELC or Public Health either one?
No.
For building.
No.
Uh, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking too.
What?
Because even, like, furnace filters.
Definitely, we, we manage, we manage maintenance and building.
Well, this discussion I got from Clayton is because we, the county pays like courthouse maintenance, we pay maintenance at DHS, we pay maintenance at the food pantry, we pay maintenance at the senior center. So he felt this was something that should be paid out of the line item like that.
She makes, I mean, if there's big things, I don't necessarily want them to come out of budget, I just didn't know if that would be helpful. Give you some time to, I don't know.
I'm gonna have to do a budget amendment no matter what now, so.
The thing about it is, something this small, this was a small mom, a hundred, a little over a hundred five dollars, but what are we gonna do if we have something on noncome, like we gotta replace, uh, one of the HVAC components? Something major happens, uh, beyond loans? How are they gonna, like Ty, how is she gonna be able to put something that big in her budget or ELC? Uh, minor things like this is, don't see the biggie, but.
Right, I just didn't know if we took care of that this time and that would give Chris some time to.
Right, decide what we're gonna do and move ahead in the future, if something big comes up, how are we gonna handle it?
Should we put the line item back in there for that building?
That would probably be your, make the most sense because then it can be tracked for that building.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna have to figure out, I'll have to do a budget amendment to put money into it.
Yeah, and that, and I like doing that because then it, it'll show, it's easier to track, it shows just how much that building and that operation and departments is costing the county. We start pulling it from general services, it's probably more hard to track.
It will come out of general services, it's just that the line will be specific for that building, just like it is for the senior center, the courthouse, DHS and food pantry. All of that comes out of general services.
But it'll just matter to put the line in there and then.
So how much money do you have, you just want to do the hundred and nine this year and then revisit it as needed, or?
I'll probably.
Which way, what's better for you?
Probably after first of July, I will have to do an amendment to put money back into it, I can go in and research to see kind of, and do a history, not necessarily on that building, because we really don't have a history, but looking at some of the other buildings to figure out the dollar amount.
Okay.
So I can, we can react, I can reactivate that general ledger number and take, get this paid. And hope, and keep my fingers crossed that general services stays within budget, so we don't have to do an amendment there for this coming, for this current year.
Okay.
Should we rename that, uh, ELC, Public Health?
That's what I'll do.
Yeah.
All right, so will you give us some guidance?
What should be coming out of there, because right now, I'm, we're doing, like, the furnace filters, if that's an expense, should be coming out of there? Or you want us to continue to put that kind of stuff in our?
Where are you taking that on?
Have to look, but I know that Amy had because we have to, they're a weird size, you can't just randomly order them.
Right, be coming out.
Three different sizes, so we had to.
Right, it's, it's been a struggle, we're trying to find out where we can get them for the best cost and they're weird, like you said, they're a weird size, so there's limitations of where you can get them.
Ty, would that be under that minor equipment line?
Or supplies?
And I, I, I don't think that they've actually been ordered yet, because I don't think a claim has come across my desk quite yet, that, so. But that would be good to know in the future, like, what is it that you want out of our budget, what is it that you want to come out of, I mean, same for.
And it's the big thing, is what are we paying for out of our budgets, what are you paying for out of yours? I mean, is the furnace filters, is it on the county, is it on ours, we need to account for that in our, our budgeting person.
There is a janitorial and, and building maintenance line.
In ours, right?
Yeah, no, it's in Public Health.
It's in, it would be in both of them.
I don't have, for some reason, I don't.
That's where the janitor comes out of.
We used to have one specifically said who was doing it, but they're not our janitor, janitorial people, and I don't have it, I don't have the budget front of me because I really wasn't sure what that was all about, but that, that could be where it's coming down.
So you need a motion to reactivate the line?
So moved.
Second.
Your first and second, all in favor?
Aye. In the meantime, we didn't have this approval, uh, payment on the claims. Um, so I guess I'll, I'll call Precision and tell them there will be a couple of weeks before they see payment.
Okay. Well, we just.
Stacked for the furnace that we, that was covered up that day, Clayton?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That extended that.
They extended it out because that, that could have been real dangerous situation. Uh, so I felt it was kind of an emergency to take care of that issue.
Just wanted to make sure anyone.
So we didn't get any backdraft for the wouldn't be exhausting, or they wouldn't even operate when they get plugged down with the pressure switch worked correctly.
Okay, so, um, I got nine fifteen, public hearing for the sale of former food pantry building. You need to open the public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the sale of a former food pantry building?
I'll second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody have any comments?
So I put together the resolution that will basically go on the board minutes, and it states that, um, a bid opening for the sale of the Buchanan County Real Estate shall be held April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four at nine thirty AM in the office of the Buchanan County Board of Supervisors. Item two, Buchanan County minimum bid of, for the property will be thirty-five thousand. Number three, bid forms are available at the auditor's office following this public hearing. And number four, bidders will be allowed to raise their bids. And so I basically got a sample bid form from Winneshi County and put it to what ours is. So this, so I'll probably put this resolution in the newspaper.
Okay.
So people know when, and then that, put it out on the website, and then these forms will be available in my office.
I'd like to re-ask that, maybe I heard you wrong, uh, the date on that, did I hear you mention April eleventh is when it'll be open?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. I did hear you wrong, yeah.
Chris, it makes sense to put that bid form on the website maybe so they can print it at home?
Yeah, they all.
They do go on there.
Okay, thank you. And you got something made up for us, we can distribute that, don't we?
I do. There. Oh. Anybody from?
Public.
Anybody from the public have anything to say? Well.
Hello? Nothing for the public, I, I make the motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
You have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We do.
Make a official, uh, I make a motion that we go ahead when, uh, move forward with the resolution and, uh, the, the sale of the old food pantry building as read and discussed by our auditor.
I'll second that.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, travel policy, mileage and meal reimbursement.
I was I just want to get some clarification because some of these claims are coming in all over the road. Um, as far as the vehicle usage policy and, um, reimbursements. It says, um, in this one, it states that, uh, when employees are traveling on official county business using a private owned vehicle, they should depart from their place of work when feasible, travel from that employee's resident may be considered normal commuting, commuting, which is excluded from the county's insurance coverage unless travel is directly to the event, event and is required by the county as part of the employee's employment. And I think probably what I'm getting, our mileage and subsistence has skyrocketed the last couple of years. And I have claims that come in that just say twenty-two miles. I have claims that come in and say independence to such and such meeting, giving me detail with the date. I would like to see something a little more specific, so we know what meetings, whether it, what department, I don't care. So I know what we're paying for. And it's not that I'm nosy, it's just that I'm gonna get questioned by the auditors.
I'll make a suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
From working in the corporate world environment.
Yep.
Be at a policy where if you were leaving directly from home to go to a whatever it was.
Yep.
Some offsite. You deducted your normal commute mileage when you work to your primary, or from your home to your primary work location. So if it's twenty-two miles, you subtracted twenty-two miles off of it.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Well, that's, that's.
Because I'm saying, because why don't I leave from home?
My office.
Well, I'm not gonna drive to, I'm not gonna drive here first and then, because that puts more miles on my car.
No, I think what he was stating, and correct me if I misunderstood, that you would, you would take your start mileage from here to there, not that you have to drive here, you know, like, for example, when I go to Des Moines and I always take my vehicle. I ca, I don't track my mi, mileage on my vehicle. I throw it in MapQuest from this location
to there.
To the, down to Des Moines, and I take that times two, I mean, because I could honestly get a pretty good chunk, extra chunk of change, travel in another thirty miles home. And I don't think, I mean, this is just me, I don't think that's right, but I, just what I'm saying, there's no consistency out of all the departments, and I really think this needs to be looked at. And then another thing, I know whenever Brian goes somewhere, whether it be for a conference, he's got a form that he uses, he's the only one that uses it, I recently had some department heads ask me, are we supposed to be using this? I don't know. And that's truly your guys' decision.
Right, no, I'm, what I'm saying though is we don't have an office here. Like, we per se, we don't have, we don't come in here to work every day because we don't have an office here, most of our work is done from home or on the road.
I just, if I got something to go look at or meeting to go to, I just, no matter where it's, if I go any direction from home, that's where I figure my vehicle, wear and tear and fuel costs start, is where I leave from.
Right, but I also.
A special meeting, now if I come here, like today, I mean, that's anything, I come to the courthouse board where my normal spot is, I don't put that down, but anything else where I go, it's, it's, I'm burning fuel, um, wearing, tearing on my vehicle, and but nothing for here.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that when I come here.
So then that, that's different, what you guys are saying is different than what the county policy is, so that's something that we really need to look at.
Yeah.
Um, I thought in the employee handbook, the policy did state that to get mileage reimbursement, uh, they needed to use like MapQuest or that's also needed to be included when they submitted their claim.
Well, that's when I figure my knowledge, that's what I do, I do like MapQuest or something in there. And, and I go by what that mileage, I just don't try to, because I don't remember to look at my odometer, what it is and stuff, and put it down, even though it keeps an accurate register of it, I, I just go by my, MapQuest says.
And the IRS dictates what can and cannot be reimbursed. Um, that is something that, since it's part of the employee handbook, I was updating. Um, so maybe Chris and I can work together on and get it updated.
Yeah, I think the, and correct me if I'm wrong Karen, but the, uh, statement we were talking about, it says that employees using personal cars for travel to conferences, schools and seminars will be reimbursed at the mileage rate set annually by the board of supervisors. Claims submitted for mileage must note the total miles traveled, point of departure and final destination and date incurred.
The public too.
Yeah.
I thought it had been there.
Unless it's in a different spot, it could be, but I'm not seeing it.
And I would totally agree with what you're saying, John, if we had, if we worked from here. Because you can normally check into your place of employment.
Well, I was on a regional staff position, I was in my office once a week. Otherwise I was traveling to stores.
Right.
Metroly or out of state even, but my mileage had me, they had me deduct the first twenty-five miles of any trip because that was the distance to my office location. Because I couldn't, I could not deduct my commute miles. That's how they had it set.
Right. In some instances.
They, they actually conceded to.
When.
Made it a closer store, it was only twenty-five miles from my home instead of like fifty mile an hour, or fifty mile
Right.
one-way trip to my office.
But when I go to the first judicial district, which is in Waterloo, do you want me to deduct the first twenty miles to Waterloo?
Oh, that makes sense, I see what you're saying.
Because I'm, I'm closer, yeah, I'm, I would be backtracking, I'm closer.
I mean, I don't know what the right answer is, but we need to figure out some consistency on what can be reimbursed. You know, and actual, whoever, whatever department head is going to what meeting.
And I guess the board of supervisors is the unique, odd ball in this whole thing, because everybody else has a primary work relationship.
And, and what actually can be, you know, like, so if I go to a political rally, that's really, I think that's for my personal gain, that's not for the county's gain.
I would agree with that.
You know, but when I go to my, my regular meetings that I'm supposed to go to, when I'm part of the committee, then I feel like then that's, that's the mileage I can take.
Issue who you can, is the meals reimbursement. And that's been, been.
Out of control.
Out of control.
Out of control, I really honestly think the board needs to put in place either some limits upper D M. And this is another one that I've brought up numerous times, I don't think county taxpayers should pay for a tip for someone serving me my meal. That just makes my blood boil. Not my say, that's just my personal opinion, I just think there's a lot of these things that we need to take a look at, we need to take a look at quickly and get something in place across the board.
Would it be wise that we maybe table this and, and have Karen and maybe Chris or Tammy, either one of you, work with Karen, and try to revise that? If you want to have one of the supervisors listen in on if they can too, but I just assume you guys come back to us with recommendations on modifications to it, and you know what the I want to call the errors or abuses are, that we can look out for, the red flags?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, okay, we can do that. Thank you.
You mentioned, uh, political rally, are you, you include, uh, like town, legislative town hall, these stuff like, like when Brian, for instance, when he went, I asked him to go up because every time I go to these, I'm speaking on behalf of local government to county. When I bring issues up to them, and I always talk when I'm there, and there's usually six legislators standing there. And I hammer on them about issues that's got a negative effect on the county. I had Brian go to the last town hall meeting, legislative town hall meeting in Arlington. And I, because he was gonna go up there and explain how the negative effects that has on his. how the negative effects that has on his department, the things that they've put in place down there or things that they were gonna be voting on. So I told Brian to go ahead, being he was going up there strictly for county business to benefit the county, I told him to go ahead and feel free to drive the county vehicle.
I think most of the time those list, those speaking sessions that they have are nonpartisan, it's pretty much. I don't see, I would call maybe Republican meeting or Democrats meeting. Women's meeting should not be something that.
And I don't have the county pay for that stuff. But also, when you go to meet the legislators or whatever, that is, to me, that's also a political thing because number one, you're there with a whole bunch of other people, I can contact, I can, right here. I have three legislators that I can contact at any point in time if I need to, until in my opinion on any bill. And it doesn't cost the county any money. And they listen better, I think, one-on-one than, than they do in a group of people, because you're gonna get the, the pat answer in a group of people.
I've been there times when I brought up, I had the crowd agree to what I've had to say, and then them six legislators sitting there, they hear that also. Because I had many times bring up, say, I agree with what Clayton said here.
That would be a political rally.
Okay, so you're gonna have the, the county taxpayers pay us to go see the legislators. Um, yeah, it's public hearing, but nine-thirty, big time.
Ultimately, open or zoning then, public hearing?
First and second, all in favor.
Case, Venus and Gebra, two zero two four zero zero three, request by Craig Finnhold to rezon point seven nine and point six seven acres from A one agricultural, the R three residential. This parcel currently contains two single-family dwellings that have been established since nineteen forty-five and nineteen seventy-five. An applicant would like to rezon the entire parcel of the survey off the second dwelling, which will allow them to be, to allow it to be sold in the future.
That's neat. Hold on, technical difficulty here. I've never said to be IT.
Yes, while we're waiting, Craig, this has never been used as agricultural since you've lived there, has it?
It's just thinking.
I think we're good.
Yeah, there it is, hey, technology works.
Mark on the, you know, plot, but most know that it's west of Independence. On Golf Course Boulevard, right on the corner of Turner and Eighteenth Street, uh, north of the property that, uh, Stan Taylor just built a new house. North of the, uh, property that's in Kenhold Home, and then directly east of the longtime Crawford, uh, Homestead Farm. So this property, as mentioned, two dwellings have been established before the Cannon County ordinance was put in place. Um, what the owner is looking to do is, uh, separate the rental dwelling that is to the west there in yellow uh, from primary residence. And so, uh, the owners came to me and, and asked me for some ideas in regards to how to split it. If you, uh, follow our rezonings, uh, anytime that we go with a smaller lot, we propose using the R three district that you can have as small as ten thousand square feet. So you can see the, uh, post lot acre to the, uh, west is twenty-nine thousand one hundred square feet, more or less, point six seven acres, and one to the east, three thousand five hundred fifty square feet. The jog there, uh, is, is basically to allow the split to happen with the survey that we would work with whatever firm the owner is, uh, proposing to work with. And keep the board of adjustment out of it, rather than go with a straight line and then have to have a variance from the board of adjustment to okay it. Uh, we would get the setback requirement from the, uh, west side of the east dwelling and then we would move forward with paperwork that they would file with their attorney, get it recorded for a easement off of two hundred and eighteen, which runs this way, east and west, but this would be a shared driveway. And then if you, uh, move forward to the septic system. So as you look, you know, the proposed driveway, uh, there's a septic tank for boats that are separate and then the seepage field does exist on the east proposed part, it's also be an easement place. And then if you go back to the aerial, these three homes are on one well, this was all owned by one family. And we would also want a, uh, shared well agreement recording. The owner there to the east understands, it's sort of been a, uh, handshake agreement to my knowledge, and maybe there's something in writing, but it's actually now filed. Um, here at the county, so we would like to have a private little shared agreement on, to make sure any type of future transfer of properties that everybody understands that, uh, one well does supply all three of those.
Chad, would there have to be a shared use agreement on the seepage fields also?
So with this, uh, as far as the recommendation from our staff does recommend condition that the applicants obtain that septic and driveway easement along with the shared well agreement during the minor plat process. So above and beyond the rezoning, this is just the rezoning from A one to R three. Um, and then once that is stamped as a resolution, we move forward with the minor plat work, survey. Um, the, uh, P and Z commission did move forward and recommend it with a six vote vote with the same condition that I just mentioned.
As far as the well, at what point does it start being classified as where you have units here sharing that same well, when you play gets classified as a community well, does that affect when that water testing has to be done? Does it require water testing of the well then?
So the, uh, if there was association with it being a private, they could have a agreement places in that association that they want to test it once a year. If it becomes public, which is fifteen dwellings or twenty-five individuals per year, then on a, on a D N R monitored well, it gets tested once per month. And that's a lot of time where you hire a wa, a water operator like Tim Downley Silisky that used to live out in Queens Edition. So, yeah, it's really common to have private, private wells, all in the Frank subdivision or one private well. And then they annually test that. And then also a lot of the river ridge cabins that are longed and hollies to the west and to the east, there's three wells out there that have, um, serviced less than fifteen cabins or dwellings.
So they'd be advising all the owners then that they, when they do a well agreement that that's placed in there, that hope they would see the importance of at least getting an annual check on their well.
And I would assume that Kathy, Kathy, yeah.
But that lady had something to say about that.
There used to be a business in the other house, in the one to the west, that required a well test. So we have tested it regularly, regularly and it's been fine.
Sorry, Chad, yeah, no, that, I was just gonna say that Kathy used to run a business, Kathy's Cakes, and they would call our department every year to test it.
I don't see that there was no opposition from anybody to move forward with this or anything from the neighborhood or anything, so.
No, no, uh, no issues. Kathy Cole was not at the meeting, but she did, she at the beginning had a preference to have the line be straight, and then once I explained it to her why we were doing that.
I totally understand that too.
I don't like seeing little jogs, I guess, here and there, but like Chad said, it would keep it from going to having the board of adjustments, spread variance on it.
And every, any application, if I can keep a entity of government out of it, that's what I try to do. So by less fees, less time.
There's no further comments, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Um, but we're, have a public hearing closed?
And would they approve all of this?
With the condition, with this recommended condition?
With the recommended conditions on sewage in the well.
The condition I have is the applicants obtain septic and driveway easement along with a shared well agreement during the minor plat process.
I will second that amendment.
I have a first and second, all in favor.
Congratulations.
The correct, we can start baking cakes and Kathy's absence out there.
Other comments? Yes, Bonnie.
I'm gonna bring this up because I have a problem with non-transparency. Uh, if you were able to attend the P and Z meeting on March sixth, you may remember a gentleman who introduced himself as follows. Rand Fisher, Clive, Iowa. I'm speaking this evening in my role as the Iowa State Director of the Center for Infrastructure and Economic Development. He handed each P and Z member what appeared to be a very professionally done book, but then proceeded to interpret the economic benefits of wind turbine fields. Let me repeat his introductory statement. Rand Fisher, Clive, Iowa. I am speaking this evening in my role as the Iowa State Director of the Center for Infrastructure and Economic Development. If one were to take that introductory statement at face value, one would be inclined to believe that Mr. Fisher worked for the state of Iowa in the position of Director of the Center for Infrastructure and Economic Development. But because Next Era has a history of playing with words, so people come to a desired understanding, we Google them. The Center for Infrastructure and Economic Development is not affiliated in any way with the state of Iowa. It's not a private company funded by Next Era, as is Right Future Iowa chaired by Ms. Swatty Dandakar. Mr. Fisher is indeed the director of the Iowa Division of this particular Next Era funded company. There are other divisions in other states of directors who no doubt will claim the same misleading title when speaking to groups and decisions making, decision-making bodies in an attempt to sway them favorably toward the company that is paying their salaries. We're not in any way insinuating that Mr. Fisher shouldn't be allowed to work or consult for whomever he pleases. However, a little honesty upfront goes a long ways, and so does a little dishonesty, intentional or not. Um, I just felt that anyone who was taken in by that needed to be informed.
That's good to know. I think it was stated by it too. The way he said it.
Yeah, we all assume. Why, in, in the natural assumption. But it wasn't right. And I was irritated, so there.
Did you present, what you just presented this, did you present that to the Chair of the P and Z?
I did not, because I, I just found this out, I, you know, nobody had ever seen this guy before until Wednesday night.
It might be good for Mr. Robinson to know that.
I intend to give a copy of that to, um, to Chad and hope that he will pass it on unless somebody else can pass it on faster, but, um, but I don't have a way to get hold of Mike, and so, um, to do that, I also want to put him in the paper, in the bulletin general, I think people need to know. I'm sorry.
Let it turn the editor or something like that.
All right. After first leasing office space in downtown Dyser more than two years ago, the Virginia-based company Apex Clean Energy, better known by its commercial wind energy project name, Windning Star Wind, has terminated its leases with Tama County Landowners. In Ohio, after holding a February fifteenth public hearing, the Mahan, the Mahan County Commissioners on Thursday approved adding ten more townships to the places in Mahan County where wind turbines cannot be constructed. Also, as I mentioned a week or two ago, Mid-American tried to add thirty more wind turbines to Madison County, Iowa, but the project was canceled after much opposition. Dickinson County, Iowa already has one existing wind farm consisting of sixty-one wind turbines. Invenogy wanted to add seventy-nine more, which would have brought the total number of wind turbines to a hundred and forty. The board rejected this proposal. People are getting tired of being walked on and are standing up for their own property rights. They are just plain getting fed up in being sacrificed for the almighty dollar. We are fortunate to have a P and Z commission that has taken its primary job of preserving the rich soil of Buchanan County very seriously and is not willing to let a large corporation come in and intimidate them into walking away from that responsibility. They have put an incredible amount of time into finalizing the WEX ordinance, and we fully support these WEX regulations and urge the board of supervisors to do the same.
Anyone else?
I've got, I've got something here, it's from the Successful Party. Last week, uh, former Governor Bill Sack, Secretary Dave Bill Sack talked about the use of non-prime farmland for renewable energy. He says that with the twenty fifty goals that we currently have for clean energy, that about ten million acres of solar collectors will be needed to help. So right now, they've, they've started what they call the raise, rural agricultural income savings and rural energy. Um, two point two billion dollars in loans and loan guarantees to, um, help with uh, renewable energy on non-prime farmland, and if you think about it, you know, we lose twelve point nine million acres a year, I think I reported that last week. But why couldn't Buchanan County be a trendsetter, apply for one of these and put in our, our planning and zoning, our WEX, you know, information, Bible, they wanna call it. But we could do residential, non-commercial WEX. You know, Buchanan County could be a leader in that, probably get a lot of money as a result of this.
As an individual basis, as an individual basis.
I was just gonna say, this, this would be local things, these would actually be turbines that would help you and maybe two or three of your neighbors.
And stay here.
They'll stay here. The energy would, would stay here and, uh, all these machine-shed shops, put them on roofs, hog buildings.
I'm seeing more of that, more of that happening, some of the ropes and stuff, it's, Bob, could I get a copy of it?
I got three copies, I made three copies for you, for each one of you. But I, I really, I mean, why not be a trendsetter for the county and do things that would benefit more people and, uh,
Yeah, you both, thank you.
I was actually pretty, um, impressed that we did raise the height of the, they made it very user-friendly for a farmer to put in their own personal wind energy. Which was nice.
And I don't think P and Z is trying to stop someone from doing that. And when I read this article, I just thought it made perfect sense, kind of like you. Why not be a trendsetter instead of following the
Be a leader.
And be a leader in something.
Instead of letting a big corporation come in and utilize from us, well, utilize from ourselves. Benefits say, the benefits to the farmer, the benefits to the county, the benefits, I mean, the farmers can make money, I know the ones are concerned with the fifteen, twenty thousand dollars per turbine that they get. But yet, you don't have to sign a fifty-year lease to give up your property rights. Just like I mentioned at the P and Z meeting with the Osage Indian Reservation, Oklahoma, where a federal judge had to stop that and make them take the, take all the turbines out. Because this company, and I think that the history of some companies, think they own all the land and they were mining the oil and the, and the valuable minerals, minerals underneath the ground. And that was eighty-four hundred acres of that project.
I'm clear.
You've mentioned how technology changes and they've talked about those small-scale wind generators that are a turbine type of thing instead of the big blades like we are used to seeing. And that's an up and coming feature that would be much more, I guess viable on a small-scale operation, whether you have four or five farms utilizing those or whatever, than looking at the big turbines.
I see this as a win-win situation with the county.
There's nothing in here that says that they can't, they can't hook up to the grid, right? This is not.
I didn't see that in the area.
Cause there's some utility companies handle that differently, how much they'll pay you for that extra power, or if you can bank the power.
It's based on their purchasing agreement. Like RAC can only purchase electricity from one provider. And like Alliant, they can purchase it from everybody. So that's why you need to bank it with Alliant, Mid-America, but we can, it's use it or lose it with RAC.
Okay.
Yeah, Mid-America is pretty, pretty friendly that way.
Yeah. There's been times where you're gonna need all the power and there's times you're gonna go overproduce.
I think it keeps going up.
We don't, they just, I mean, just this year.
They just don't know how much this county would conserve on energy use, such that we had. Well, if every farmer put panels on their machine shed roof, how much energy savings this county would do to that, any south-facing rooftop?
Right.
Make it a standardized thing and the government and the county want to help favor these things to be done. Grants and funding, even better.
And this doesn't, uh, put people, help the risk, the animals at risk, change the environment like we've seen Germany is one, for example, and Wisconsin has where it's, it, it, it's not green. I mean, it's, it's created and, and, uh, you know, there's more energy lost. There's, you know, the, the farming has been affected, the wind has been affected, it's affected the, the weather patterns. And you'll find in Germany, there's studies after studies that talk about their, their good farming land that's being ruined because.
Did you, uh, I don't know if any of you get a chance to drive down the Quasquithen diagonal, but where Iowa lost soil is located. They got a huge building, shop building, whatever, they use it out there and they put a big solar array up on top. It's quite large. Another thing that's amazing, you can drive around that little town of Quasquithen, some of them that are inside the city limits down there, in their backyards and stuff, it's amazing how many of them little. You know, it's been put up in that town down there. Apparently, I'm thinking that there's probably no ordinance down there regulating anything on it in that little town. I, I don't know.
But just like the solar standpoint, look what's happening next to us. Uh, the payload, the, the center point, all that, the good viable ground is being lost. And you'll even be able to recover it because, you know, solar panels do that leak each of chemicals, those type of things. What's that gonna do leaching into that land? If they remove those solar panels, are they gonna reuse them again, or how many years would it take for that solar to be viable again? It feels, the smarter ways to get this done, I think, to create energy and, or at least make something attractive to any businesses, even in town, to make that attractive to them to want to have their building plan, like, like your emergency center down here.
Right.
You, you, you could place something there to help reduce your energy use, use there, that site that on an individual basis.
Something I found a lot interesting, I was at, last week I was at a business and the guy that run the business, I got a discussion with him, his parents own property over in Delaware, close to where turbines are at over there. And he's got clients that are nuclear engineers also. This guy I was talking to, and, cause I had mentioned to him, I said, it's a shame that they shut down a nuclear plant when they were actually licensed up until twenty thirty-five. And he says, and these clients of his said, the engineers said it needed to be shut down because the safety was kind of a touch-and-go thing there and, uh, it's gonna require a lot of maintenance. And I, I know when that was built, that was put up back in the seventies when that was, uh, done, but I just, uh, I'm kind of a nuclear guy. I think it's the way we should be going. But it was kind of interesting to hear that, that he told me that's what his client said, that it needed to be shut down.
I've heard that to contradict you, but I've heard that they would have taken three hundred to thousand to five hundred thousand dollars to fix what needed to be fixed and they're being back up to where it was without.
Yeah.
But, you know, which, and when you're talking about it, but when Next Era has got a hundred and eight million dollar grant to decommission that, you know, half a million dollars. You know, I don't know, it's just.
To keep it?
It seems, yeah.
What's the guy's client, Vince Darrow?
No, I, and it's, and I agree because they have annual, they had annual shutdown out, down there. And I know a plunderers companies and stuff that was involved going down, or I know guys that worked down there, they did a lot of annual big maintenance work down here.
Well, it seems to me that that was renovated right before it was shut down. They just went through and did a bunch of renovation and updates when they shut it down. I know some electrician, there are electricians that was down there, did a lot of work, but you know, but.
But then shortly after Next Era went down into payload there at, at the Duane Arnold plant, it wasn't but two months and the first thing they did was tear down the cooling towers. Those had some damage from the duration, yes they did, but the amount of expense to repair those, I would think fails to that they want to spend now, well, they wind turbines everywhere. But it didn't take them long to knock those things out so they could take that Duane Arnold plant out. I just wonder what their decommissioning plans are. They just can leave that mobility and everything just stuck there? I mean.
I got another question for you in the moratorium. What are we, what are we at on that?
I, um, sent an email to the attorney to look at potentially extending that case. We had to do some tweaking back and forth with planning and zoning. Cause I know that's gonna be up in May and planning and zoning, want to take one more look at the, what they put together before they put it in front of the board. So that puts us on a pretty tight timeline.
That's just on one, um, ordinance, we haven't gotten to the comprehensive plan.
Right, but, so I just put, I just asked Josh to look into that. And I hadn't put that in front of the board yet, so.
Well, I know it's in minutes that we had the option to extend that we need.
Right.
Just wondering if on track for.
Extension.
Yeah, well, I think the object of the moratorium was to allow us time to not only do the ordinance, but also the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that's, no, I understood when you put it to.
I think the, the option of extending that is the bonus.
Right.
Don't rush it, do it with due diligence.
No, I think the planning and zoning has done a really good job of really tearing into the ordinance and trying to get the right points.
Know that joining counties for information and putting everything together.
We, we've, they've done a lot of research, that's for sure.
They've always been fair. So the fifty-five CSR rule has been in place long before Next Era came to town. And now they're calling it the poison pill, the poison pill, the poison pill. That's always been the county stance. We've never changed that.
If you go back and look at the solar, what we have in solar, it's fifty-five.
There's fifty-five and buildings.
And we.
This is all of that's always, it's always been fifty-five. That was long before the energy companies come to town and just last week, uh, one of the Amish men wanted to add on this building, they had to table it because of the CSR rating this building was on. And they've always been fair and that's always been in place long before the energy companies here.
Can I ask you a question? Why, what I gather, and I wasn't here before, why did the solar, I mean, the Board of Supervisors recommended P and Z look at it and create the, the solar plan, right? And from what I understand, there was no problems, no negativities. Why is there so much negativity now when we're doing wind?
I don't think that Bright Future Iowa knew that, that they were doing the solar until after it got done. Otherwise, I think there would have been pushback on that too.
And that was done in?
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty.
Mm-hmm.
On the lead, cause I remember for now, at least four years. You know, at least.
So I see why we need to, uh, change something for somebody who's not a county. I mean, to their specifics.
Right.
Sure. We had an individual come in there late that hadn't spoken. I don't know if he was just listening or like to say something.
I guess. I was at the meeting last week, I think I heard you were too, Clayton. I know Dawn was there. I just want to say, what they put together here, I fully support. The neighbors I've talked to do too.
Yeah.
That's fine. I fully support what they put together here.
And I'm gonna have everybody notice, I'm very careful when I go to that meeting. I just feel there's, to listen because sometimes it's better to be, I have a better feel of the people that's there when I'm there in person. But I stay tight-lipped and I try to stay head back in the corner.
I didn't see you until you were ready late, so I was.
How could you miss me?
I didn't see you. I just heard you were there, that's what I.
I did when you were ready, they saw you.
My advice, keeping under control is. Can I ask this? Maybe you can't answer. How much pressure on the three of you are getting from Bright Future or Next Era?
Oh. Okay, full disclosure here. There have been text messages sent out by Robotext to contact the Board of Supervisors by email. They sign, they click a link, their emails, stuff is self-populated, then it comes through to us and it's all from the same, like, it's all from the same email address. There's been thirty of them so far.
I got one the next morning. A text that I was supposed to contact you guys and make sure you voted no.
Yeah.
And like, did they not know that I just, yes, for our plan? I mean, I don't know if they didn't look at the, I was wondering if it was a robo.
Yeah.
And they attached John Sturz's name to it.
Yeah, they did.
Is everything in that article, uh, the text, is it real? I mean, was it true?
Not.
It wasn't really. They're to dispute anything.
It, that didn't dispute.
It just.
It was in support of landowners' rights.
Right.
And that, that by doing this, we're taking away the landowner's right to do what they want on their farm.
Why, the neighboring farms, why the neighboring landowners, that anybody who's living anywhere near.
Their, their big thing was just, how come my neighboring landowner can control my land?
Exactly.
And that's.
Things are reciprocal.
It, it, it works both ways.
It's got wind turbine next to my property. I'm gonna put a hog boom in right next to it and it'll. Just as fast as any piece of.
Distribute the.
Make sure it goes back to.
And again, when I was doing real estate, you have all these people from the big cities wanting a quiet, pristine location. And I would always tell them, you are in a farming community. If the farmer wants to put a hog confinement next to your property, he can do that. He need, I mean, he has to get P and Z and whatever, but he could, if it passed, he could put it next to you. You're in a farming community. So I think property rights, I mean, we all have property rights. I can't just put a fence up in my backyard. I can't put a swimming pool in my backyard without maybe the neighbor saying something. Put a fence on the, on the property line, can't do that. I didn't know. So we all have rules that we get permission to do things.
Yeah, and there is a caveat. With the setback, there is a caveat that if you get permission from your neighbor, that, you know, that it's okay. So there's a caveat in there written into it, which I thought was, no, what it said was, um, I'm a farmer here in Buchanan County. Last night, the Planning and Zoning Commission gave initial approval to changes to a county ordinance redefining private property as community property. That opens the door to more government control over what you can do with your own land. It's not really, it, you can't dispute what it says, but it's not really accurate. I mean.
It's one of the words.
They're.
We have interpreted.
Yes. Words.
Psychologically, it's gonna upset some people, but they have to give up their rights.
I got a, there's a signature from a family that they left Grandi County to get away from the wind turbines. They lived right underneath them and they, they left Grandi County to come to Buchanan County.
Yeah, when Grandi County was the county, I'm pretty sure, I have to go back in my notes, but they, that was neighbor against neighbor over there. Um, they let them come in. Big mistake, not realizing everything that it would impact.
Right.
Well, the first, this was a different lady, but there was another lady from Madison County. She spoke to the first random meeting where they talked about turbines. And she talked about how, okay, it wasn't so bad, all the, all the gravel trucks and the, uh, cement mixers and all that stuff. And the next thing you knew, there was three projects that went in and she moved to the Jessup area to get away from it. And now she's saying, what am I gonna have to do if, if the turbines go in? Where am I gonna move?
Um, I guess what really, what really upsets me about the whole thing is I watched them come in here. I've watched people that used to get along, used to be friends and used to wave at each other. You know, it's like, it's torn a small community apart. And, and they're from, they're from people that are out of state in some instances, out of our county in other instances, and they've just made a mess of our county. That's the part that upsets me. It's like, they're not, from here, they're gonna go away. Once a project's done, they're never gonna, they don't care what they've done to the people.
They keep bringing it up and they're still around. Next era hasn't left. And I'm like, why are they sticking around? We've had this. I would have walked away twenty months ago.
Right, because of the fifty-five CSR, knowing that it's, that's what it's always been.
They kept it quiet so nobody else knew. Wasn't that why it was kicked out of that particular Board of Supervisors? Is because they kicked it back to the P and Z, changed their, that's.
That was so.
That was from Gary and.
Yeah, we, we asked the P and Z Board to go back and look at, maybe looking, because at that time, I think the average CSR rating was seventy-one. We asked the P and Z Board, it felt that needed to be, go back and look at that, maybe setting it instead of fifty-five to seventy-one is to review that idea. Take another look at that. But I, I want to let everybody know, I'm sitting here, I think people, this is a public comment time. And what we're supposed to be doing is listening to you folks, what you have to say about that. I, it's my duty to sit here and look at both facts from both sides here and do my due diligence to investigate. My time to speak about how I feel about it, or which way I'm going, will happen when the final P and Z proposal of the amendments come here. Until then, I'm not gonna sit here and say which way I'm gonna vote or who I'm for or anything. I, I cannot do that and I should not do that. I just want to let you know that. I appreciate the public, no matter who you are, coming here and speaking and bringing facts that you know and your things that you want us to hear, I'm fine with that. But I can't sit here and indicate where I'm leaning until I make the final vote here when that's brought up.
And how many votes, is it three times that you vote for this or?
Yeah, it'll be three.
Three public hearings.
Three public hearings.
It'll roll. Once you receive our recommendations, then it's three after that.
Yes.
You move CSR up seventy, you're gonna open a can of worms for anybody, everybody come in, build whatever. You can take two hundred bush and corn out of the equation on seventy CSR round.
And solar will come back and then fight you out of their vote.
Oh, yeah.
When this came.
And open up a bad door.
When this.
Lot of good land in this county.
Yeah, when this came before us, the first time I got, uh, an email from somebody who had wanted to build on the family farm and got told no because the CSR was too high, they had to find a different location. And she said, why would, why would you let? Why would you raise it? Why would you raise it, raise the CSR for them, but you wouldn't for me and I've lived here all my life? And I'm like, how do you answer a question like that when you, when it's been this way for all that time? Not indicating which way I vote, just saying.
You're not in an envious position, we understand. Do your best.
I, I wish this would have all got settled and taken care of before I sat in this chair or after I was gone.
It has not.
It's, it's been very stressful and I, I hear from a lot of people, both sides on this, I mean, I. It's getting to the point where it's hard to go out publicly and not get approached. And any side, you know, I'm not condemning either side on that, but I guess what. Being an elected official, I knew that was gonna happen, that would be, that's just part of my job. I. And often tell people, the only time you can talk to me is, is between eight and four-thirty Monday through Friday. I'm not gonna happen because I'm. I feel I'm a target uh seven days a week, twenty-four hours. I've had people, I've had contact at this late as eleven o'clock on a Sunday night, not about this, usually about nothing.
Clayton, I'm gonna pay a statement that I heard a lot when I was superintendent of schools. That's why you make the big bucks.
Yeah. Why don't you wake me up and let me know when I start to make the big bucks?
Yeah, and and we all know, and we, when we run for a position like that, we're, it's not gonna be easy. We're gonna have to make some tough decisions that just. Comes with the territory.
Well, sadly, it it is a very emotional issue and there's little compelling arguments on both sides that really gotta listen to. And it it has divided the community, that's what's really tough.
And once that happens, they couldn't care less. They just move on to the next county and start the process all over again. That's the thing that's also sad.
Right.
Yeah, strictly a business proposition for them.
Yeah.
You guys strictly a people position. You're important people in the county.
Right.
Well, this, this is a big thing, it's happened, I um talked to the owner just yesterday that works for an electrical firm. That basically goes around and works on renewables. I hired him to do a job for me and he he is all over the nation. He was out to Utah here a couple of weeks ago, he's gonna go to Indiana Tuesday and that's all he does. Is work with a symmetrical company that works on renewable, solar, wind and stuff, so I mean. He said they're busy and there's a lot of activity going on nationwide. I mean, he, he just doesn't work in Iowa, he mostly works out of state. This big firm that he works for, so it's, there's a lot of that going on throughout our country.
Question, hasn't Iowa met our renewable energy? Eight, we had goals at the under, wherever South Florida State Iowa. We were supposed to meet so many renewable energies at the time and we're above that percentage, beyond it.
You find out for sure on that, I mean, who would you?
Oh, it's, I got it now. I didn't bring it, I just remembered.
Yeah.
But yeah, the state of Iowa had a goal that we were gonna be. Had to have this much renewables by a certain time and per say it was a percentage and we've surpassed that.
I think Iowa was like second in the nation as far as ratio.
Texas is first, Iowa is second.
When you go through Texas, it's, it's huge. I go through it twice a year and it's huge.
That's where I can keep them.
Well, I will say, I will say one thing possibly that uh, I think our country is not prepared. For infrastructure wise or electrical production wise for these EV vehicles.
Yeah. Another whole story.
Speaking of that, I heard there was, um, you know, those, the ramps that they have, the car ramps? There was a car ramp that collapsed because the EV vehicles are are a lot heavier than what our normal cars are.
Yeah.
And they weren't, they're just not prepared. Now that you say that.
Well, Dunlap Motors had to put in a larger hoist system because the hoist they had in there would not lift the EV.
Three-quarter ton truck with a can of your car.
Just sing about that does your roads.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. I agree.
And they didn't pay road tax.
And if you have to replace that battery, it's almost equal to the cost of a new car.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else for the good of the cause? Yeah, Don.
We have a talk, um, maybe you did earlier, but the proposal was for seventy-two windmills. Is that what we're looking at? Their proposal was to build seventy-two if everything was.
Sixty-eight to seventy-two was kind of announced in that area.
I was at a meeting one night where they had a chart there, the red graph, where the wind was in Buchanan County. Southern Buchanan County was in the red, but as you move north towards Independence, there were red areas. So when these seventy-two are built, I'm assuming down there in the southern part of Buchanan County. They don't come back, we have every leverage, hey, you know, there's more wind north of these, we want to do another seventy-two. Is there any? Are we giving up any freedom here as future if you let them in the door at seventy-two? I wished my wife and I were in Minneapolis last summer and it's coming down sixty-three and I should have thought, took a picture. There were windmills off that road. They weren't just scattered around the countryside. They were in rows. I couldn't have shot a rifle, pull it down through there, not missed. They were in rows, they were cluttered in. And it looked terrible. So we set ourselves up for disaster.
And I don't know how Grundy County did it, but I know Grundy County and I don't know if they did it. By ordinance, moratorium, I I don't know I, how they did it, but they put a limit that no more. And I don't know how they legally did that, but they they said no more in our county.
And you can do that.
And I don't know how, but avenue, what road, how they've accomplished that to do that, but I don't know. That could be done, yes, apparently.
I think Blackout County has to think that they don't want any of them, but that's all up for legal interpretation, I mean.
Right.
These energy companies have enough money that they can tie you up in court for.
Hour a week, yeah. There is, there is plans for, this is according to one farmer, north of Brandon, I won't say who it is or how far north of Brandon. But there's a a power station that's planned to be there. Well, you know what, that. I discount. So you might eventually, if if this allows, there'll probably be another. Sunny turbine project and then another, there could, there could be three different projects in our county.
Or it could be in eastern Blackout County too.
Rumor was out there that I was gonna have that power station on my property.
Just for your not doing that.
Yeah, so I, so when I, I heard that at comment time here and I thought, wow, that's news to me, nobody's changed means. Because I know they wouldn't be able, because of my location where I'm at, I I my CSR would need it, but. Where I'm located along the river and the temporary and stuff, there'd be no way that. A turbine can be put there, but they could put their power substation, collection station there.
This came from a farmer who's due to give money if they put a substation, as he's outspoken maybe too much, but.
And I hear that takes up to twenty acres to do that. The one, if you go up the one by New Hampton. You know, my brother-in-law's a farmer, he knows acres better and he said the one, the big substation there is either twenty to twenty or thirty acres they take.
So that takes so above and beyond the seventy-ish acres that they talk about taking out of. Production, they don't include the substation, which is another twenty acres?
They've already contradicted themselves in last meeting, just two months. With the road access points and the towers and everything. See, and New, and New Hampton, I bet they haven't figured it. You've been up there, some of those are really, really long lengths.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that that project's already complete, they got on both sides, Highway sixty-three.
The wide road.
Yes.
Contacted.
So I don't think that's counted in on the, they're talking the sixty-five feet or whatever it is that is around for the, for the turbine actually is, but.
A lot of them roads I seen, not all of them, but a lot of them I see where they bring run road in driveway or what do you want to call it, from the main road. And then they'll bring it in and then they'll tee it off, a distance to go into each, you know, the turbines.
A lot of things, whatever, that pays for what they do.
Well, yeah, that's what I said, they did that some places and not others.
All right, do you have anything else for the good of the cause?
Okay.
First and second, all in favor of journeying?
All right.
Machine carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.